Well, after a quick drive to town. I'll wait till a few people get on. After a quick drive to town from Mooresville, we are now live at R E M C where Mayor Costin is holding a town hall Q and A. And it's gonna get started here in just a moment. I was told where we're at, we will be able to hear all the questions and all the answers. So. The podium is up there. Please share this event. If you would. What a fantastic announcement a little bit ago by Rob up at Huber with Trace Ad Kids coming back to town, Diamond Rio. And Lone Star, plus Big Country in Rosemont. Fun night. We're, uh. Running from one end of the county to the other, so we're live. Here at R E M C. Waiting the mayor. I don't know who all, uh, who all's gonna be here. Big crowd. Anyway, please like and share. What's up, Mr. Duncan? I kept waiting to find you in there, I was like, Kenny, I need some coffee. What's the call, what do I gotta do to get coffee around me? You guys don't drink coffee in this place? Yeah, I ran from Huber to here in about ten minutes. And actually stopped by the house real quick. Uh, Mayor Costin is holding a town hall Q and A, Jerry, and we're gonna cover as much as we can live. So. See what happens. I don't know what's gonna transpire here. This is, uh, Mayor Costin's holding a Q and A with the city. And anybody's invited, you can come down. Um. We're gonna cover it live. See what happens. Kenny, how dare you? What's up, Tim Barber? Jerry Vass, how you doing? I left Huber with Tim and Angie and Paul. Definitely had to go to a meeting up in Mooresville. Uh, Angie and Paul and Timmy are at Gray's Cafeteria. Am I asking questions? Uh, I was here to film. You can come sit at my table and ask. I don't know. Maybe, maybe if, um, he lets me, if you send a question in. As long as you don't try to get in trouble. I have to behave somewhat, Cindy. As they gag down a pretzel. Hello, Michelle and I will. Hello Jeff, hello Mike Mentee. Jesse, what's up, buddy? I do that well enough on my own. Valid. All good here, Michelle, hope it's all good in Iowa. Hello, Jesse. Let's see, I see Mr. Oaks, Mr. and Mrs. Oaks, the Duns. Mr. and Mrs. Costin. Frank Lang. Jimmy Wisco. Um, Mr. Coffee. Hello Patty. Hello Wendy. Thank you, sir. I twenty-four, I twenty-four. Well, see, I could, I could do that. Oh, there we go. There's the mayor. I'm gonna hurry back so I can kinda talk to, I can narrate. Here, CB.
Good evening, and I wanna thank each of you for coming out tonight. I know there are a lot of different activities going around in the city. And we intend, I'd like to come here and ask some questions, your concerns for our city, where we're going, what we've been through. I appreciate that very much. We are gonna be very informal. We do have Fortune 9 here, student enforcement, we have Facebook Live in the city here, so, again, the only questions we're gonna take will be from you that are here. So, again, I appreciate you coming. Mr. Coffee, this is a mic to take over to whoever has a question. And I know you might be a little bashful from a mic, but please use it that way the people watching online will be able to hear your question and the others in the room. So, let's get started.
Hello, good evening. I manage a residential facility around Gordon Avenue. And the front of my facility just happens to face Trader Bakers flea market dumpster.
Okay.
And it has been an issue for so long. Um, I always, there's always somebody dumpster diving. It doesn't matter what time of day, what time of night, and it disturbs my residents. Um, and it's also the city dump. So, if anybody wants free garbage service, just come to the dumpster. Um, people dump furniture, they dump beds, recliners, and they sit there for months. And my residents have to look at all that, and I have pictures of people to see.
Sure. If, if, if you've got those, I will look at them. Is there any, there's no fence around this dumpster at all?
No. No, as a matter of fact, right before I came here tonight, there was somebody inside the dumpster.
And, and I'm not laughing, but I completely understand. Have, have you spoke to Mr. Daniel about this?
No, I have not. I've talked to the manager of Trader Bakers, and she says there's nothing she can do. But my residents are constantly, Mr. All hours of the night, you can hear people banging around in there, and they're slamming their car doors and...
The RV that has this, uh, torn up tarp on it, is that something?
That's gone now, but it's out there for about six months.
Candy and pretzels.
May I share these? Sure. I have to look at these. Mr. Timmy is our code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Is that something we should be able to address? I better come back and get my glasses on. And, again, we don't wanna give you misinformation tonight, so if you would, if you would give back, record your name and number.
Sure.
And let us have some time for Ike to look in on this, because none of this should not be going on.
The, the facility that I actually manage is a mental facility, so my residents are easily triggered.
Okay. We will look into that and get back with you. Today's Thursday, by next Wednesday.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Who, who's the next one to question? Hello, Commissioner Carter? Or, or are you here as far as the Carter, or just Mr. Carter?
It's been one of those days, I don't even know who I am yet. I'm just coming from a meeting, so I apologize for my tardiness.
Sorry, aren't you getting snacked?
Yes. Okay, I was taking care of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on, don't be bashful. Anything, 'cause, you know, we're all, all the administration's here, so if I don't have the, play the answer, play the, all right?
Audience, sorry Wendy, woo-hoo, thank you. Thank you Wendy.
Hello, my name's Phil Leonard, and I have a little piece of property up at, uh, 695 North Marion. They just put new sidewalks, curbs, paved streets, they covered the drains. It just floods terrible now. And they used to be in there, I thought they were hooking it back up when they were doing all the work, but still, this one's real bad right here. I think Lane Street is the key street in there, which is into the property. But it just holds water.
Now, Frank, didn't we talk about that earlier in the week, or last week?
We did, and we're going to maybe look into putting some dry wells down there also.
Well, it had a drain that went to the other side of the street, and when they repaved it, they done away with both of them.
Okay. Well, let us talk with, uh, yes, Bob.
Mayor, to clarify, those drains, Frank, I believe they went into the sanitary, and that's why they were disconnected.
Ah, okay.
Uh, that's, that's, good, good reason.
Water, your tree, walk, unnecessary walk. That cost everyone money.
I wasn't thinking about the sanitary, because it always runs.
But, but what we can do is, Nick, we're, we're getting to the end of the season when we put the dry wells on, and, and this isn't an ideal fix. As most of us know, it's a four man spec, but it's at least something. So, we'll, we'll fill up that area next year, because we've got six, we'll have leftover that we can put somewhere.
Okay. And the other one, I think Mr. Oaks has tied that in on, thank you for looking at our levy. This is to the best of the administration. Everybody started to blind eye to that levy out there, thinking the outflow of all this money downtown, watching what? And I said, thank you very much for being the ball, folks.
Well, and, and thank you for advising me here for that also. Thank, huge thank you to Ron Bray and Peggy Meffel for helping us with that also. And you have to grant, Phil, it's, it's gonna be a twenty-three man dollar project plus. And had we not anything with the levy, there would've been about four hundred residents and separate businesses that would've had their flood insurance adjusted because of the new happenings coming out, so.
Like I say, I'm very glad, I wanted to sort of bitch hack it that little bit and never got any results of that.
Gary, we should start in twenty-three, is it?
Well, we'll do the permitting process, hopefully next year, but, uh, we'll be out next week trying to identify clay samples. The levy has to be built out of clay, and we have to go out and test some possible sites to look for that much volume of material.
Yes, I remember, a hundred and sixty-five thousand cubic yards. That's a lot of plant.
How many cubic yards in the curb?
He thought the traffic's been bad around the cross thirty-nine, now wait until the circling of the nun for us. Anything else, Phil?
No, thank you very much.
Anybody else? So, say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you please clarify for me the plans for the Smoothie Shop, which the city recently purchased? I was at the meeting yesterday morning from seven thirty a.m. to ten a.m. in the council chamber, the meeting of the Martinsville Economic Development Commission. I thought that the plan had been for a welcome center there.
Yes, there, there will be a welcome center, there will be restrooms on the back side of it. We will definitely have the welcome center open whenever there's events downtown. There will be other seven hours for the welcome center to be open during the week. Again, that's gonna be a funding issue, because I have to be somebody in the city to hire. So, next year, when we go through the budget process, then, you know, they're gonna have to figure out how many hours do they want to open? How many concerts are we gonna be able to have? How many plays are we gonna be able to have? And when we've got something going on downtown, we want a place for the residents to want, to welcome people in the market, so they may not have been here before, and also to have restrooms available to them.
Can you estimate how many times a year those restrooms will be unlocked so that the public can use it? Because I'm thinking about a young mother with three children whose husband is funding overseas for our country, could be the other gender wave. If she goes downtown and there is not a quote venue event, will she be allowed to use the public restroom?
Yeah, that's a good question, and, and, you know, we've been lacking in, in public restrooms, uh, in the downtown area. Deb and I were down in Corin last year and went to their wel, their welcome center.
It's very lovely.
And, and that's what kinda gave us the idea of the Smoothie Shop would be a great location for that, because the original downtown plans for the, uh, performing area, we were gonna have restrooms back. Gary was in, to the east of Jefferson Street, kinda along the alley, and it was just gonna be restrooms. So, we thought, well, let's have the welcome center, because this is the way we can promote our city, there's some special things that we're gonna be doing next year for the bicentennial, so this is all going to kinda tie into that. But the restrooms want to be open twenty-four seven. And, you know, it'll be, depending on the funding of how often we have it open, we may go have funding to have it open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and on Saturdays when the concerts are going. You know, for the amount of money the city is investing in this performance area, we want it used every weekend somehow. Whether it is Mayor Max coming in for the play, whether it is somebody that's wanting to have a dance recital, because the way they've designed it, and Gary and Troy have done a great job on this, there's gonna be restrooms on each side, so it's gonna have multiple uses. So, but to sit here and tell you that they're gonna be open Monday through Sunday from eight to four, or eight to six, I can't do that right now.
I understand that. I, I do think there are creative ways to bring in some income from the welcome center in the front.
Mugs.
That there is some funding available, and there are two people who asked me to bring things to your attention, and one of them, for James Mortimer, Mr. Carter, actually. I saw Patty Hill this morning, she's in her eighties, I don't know if you know her. She told me about how when she was a little girl, four or five, and they would go to town, all the band would be off talking, and she, her, she and her mom would sit on benches, under the trees, in the shade, before her daddy gave them a quarter, and they went to go eat, both of them, for a quarter at the Black Line. And, and she said, please, please ask them to put benches on courthouse lawn, water fountain, and public restroom. That's what Patty Hill asked me to, to ask you for. Now, two older gentlemen said to me, oh, why frankly, don't they understand that older people have to go to the bathroom more often? And so, I understand that we don't want them open twenty-four seven, but in Nashville, Indiana, they have two sets of really nice restaurants, and I think they're pretty much open daily hours for the tourists to come. And if we want more tourists to come shop at our downtown shops, then I think we need to figure out how to keep the restrooms open longer. Now, I know that there are places that have volunteers that dress in historic costume and monitor sites. Now, I understand right now the plan is for the restrooms to be on the north, and then the diagram showed an office in the front. Well, my position on that is this, if you put the welcome center on the southern side, you are preserving that beautiful southern exposure, the sunshine coming in, the beautiful view of the courthouse, for people coming from out of town. Now, some of you may be blasé about that, I got a little bit of, at the meeting yesterday, but I have spoken to many people who have come to Martinsville and say, this is such a beautiful town square, they loved sitting there with Karen, who was making her muffins, and they were making the coffee. So, I think a possibility is to keep that front door open for the welcome center, and do some kind of volunteer program for hosting, which I think they do in Corin, and I think some of those folks are volunteers. Uh, at least the last time I was there, that was the case. So, there are creative ways to preserve that beautiful space in this, on the southern side. And, uh, the gentlemen were just frankly, very disgusted, and I'm talking about veterans in their eighties, disgusted with the idea that the bathrooms would only be open during...
Well, again, I don't know, that's for sure, but there, but there's no need to discuss much further. Your, your, your point's taken, but the council's gonna have to figure out how much money they want to allocate for our welcome center. That's going to dictate everything we, we do. Okay. Any other questions?
If you think the restroom is based upon age, I must be of age. And to give people...
Hi, I'm Brian Carter. Thank you for hosting this, Mr. Mayor. To give people additional things to talk about, read the paper tonight, because we have on the table a parking garage to deal with some of the parking. There's a lot of good ideas, and I compliment the mayor for doing this, but I always get concerned, um, because as an elected official, I, I feel like I'm volunteering a lot of time, and there's about five people in this whole room that I don't know on a first-name basis. So, those five, I can say a lot of things that may shock you, the rest of the room is going, it's just Brian. So.
I saw that movie, not me.
Yeah, exactly, you did. And, and my point of it is, is that what the mayor and the city's witnessing, what the county is witnessing, especially at the southern ends, the sixty-nine, we've talked about two decades, when sixty-nine gets here, and sixty-nine gets here, it's here. And I still would argue, based upon some of the things that I've been thrown into as a commissioner, that now I feel I'm ten years behind. If this was a business plan, now I'm ten years behind, because there's things that have occurred that we just didn't plan for at the county level. And I've told people for the longest time, it's a whole lot easier to manage a government that's stagnant or shrinking, that the people are shrinking, because your tax base follows, so you have taxes to do. But now that we're starting to witness growth, our finances, I can't speak on behalf of the city, but on the county, our finances are, start getting stretched. And, and you don't want them too thin, but they're gonna get stretched. And at the same time, to think that the county's even entertaining a, something like a parking garage in the city to handle some of these issues, people just think I'm crazy. But where are people gonna park? And we're going to grow, and we're only to outgrow certain buildings, and we have to have the foresight to plan ahead, because we don't have the tax base to go out and do a fifty million dollar project. Not tomorrow, not next week, not next year. So, it puts those in leadership positions in the awkward situation of managing limited funds with huge needs. And as we start to grow and get more housing development and more people moving here, which is what we ultimately want, we want our schools to be, to grow, every single one of them. We want them to be the best, we wanna give the next generation the best opportunity we can. There's just limited funds. But I like the benches, the counter to that is how do you keep the people that you don't want on the benches? I'm not that selective. You have to have alternatives for those who aren't as fortunate as some of us, and that population's growing. I know that because I'm a full-time partner, as the mayor alluded to, he is my boss all the time, but especially every third day. And I'm telling you, there's people out at all hours, and I'm concerned, where do they go? Without breaking hip, though, because I didn't get any of the run information, we went on the homeless guy behind the dumpster just the other day. So, where's that guy gonna go? I don't know. Is there drug problems? There's drug problems everywhere, but not in proportion. I, I, I promise you that. But do we have plans in place to handle that? Do we have plans in place at the county to handle this growth? And that's the neat thing, that I can take the liberty, and he can correct me, not as my boss, but as my friend. Mr. Costin and I have been friends for a long, long, long time. And while we may differ on certain aspects, we're friends enough to differ, but we know that we're growing, we know that we have to push the envelope, 'cause this growth's on kind whether we want it or not. It's how you shape that growth determines fifty years from now, were we successful or not. And so, while I'm happy to come to things like this and witness everybody here, I was hoping this, I actually, my wife went, let me, she's got a school activity going, but I was looking for my pitchfork and a torch. 'Cause I just wanted to stand in the background and make faces. And, 'cause I can't believe that he went out there to do all this, to, to take, 'cause, you know, he could have had a real rough crowd tonight. You guys are letting him off easy. You guys on the internet, is no one throwing us any questions to put him on? To make it awkward?
Well, it, it, it's gone dead, so I'll just have to kinda yell here.
You can have this, this is yours, not mine.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. But, you know, and, and one of the things Brian was kicking in today, uh, we were talking about how much paving we've done this year. By the time Milestone gets through here in a couple of weeks, we'll have paved almost nineteen miles here in the city, and that's, that's remarkable. And everybody's thinking, well, how are you doing that when funds are tight? Well, with any municipality, there are different funds that you draw from. Our general fund is what we use to run the city. Salaries. Day-to-day operations. But then there's other funds, we all pay a stormwater fee on your utility bill, and, you know, we wanna try to get this out, it's a utility bill, not your water bill. Your water fee is on there, but you also have your wastewater, your stormwater, your water, and then you have a sanitation fee on there. So, there's several things wrapped up, and you have a stormwater fee that we all pay into. That's where we're getting most of our paving done this year, because we're putting the dry wells in. Matt Heming, we put in nineteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
And then six inlet boxes, right in through the system.
Now, again, Phil, like we said, it's, it's not a perfect solution, but it is a solution no problem we've had. It would be nice to have millions of dollars to come in and ask engineering to come in and put our s, s, uh, stormwater system through, but we're not gonna be able to do that. So, this is the best way we do it, and that's why we're gonna pay out of that fund, because we need to be able to direct the water to those inlet boxes. Then there's another grant money that we get, that is for the paving, uh, the first few phases that we have in paving, uh, we have some grant money into that. They are very specific on what you can do with those funds. The, this final phase, our third phase, has been done mainly from our stormwater with all the, uh, dry wells. So. Any other questions?
Can I share your mic for me?
You share.
This is a public service announcement. Uh, we have a couple of things coming up, I think most of you are aware that the plumes we have in the city with I D M, we, uh, negotiated a reconciliation with the responsible party, and if you happen to live in one of those plumes, you may need to get hold of me or that party directly, and, uh, take advantage of the four thousand dollars available if you have the city water at this point. That's only open for a one-year period of time, and that clock's ticking already. Second thing I'd like to, uh, let everybody know about is the EPA Pike Mulberry Plume, which is the one to the northwest of town, they're gonna have people in town, uh, later this month, they're gonna be in town October the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, and they're gonna set up four workstations, there's one at the library, I think there's one about the post office, there'll be one up at the Wellsport Park, and a lot of Harrison, and then there'll be one up by our water plant. At that point, they'll be, uh, passing out information, but more than anything, they'd like permission from you to grant to go into their home. They're concerned with what we have, they control over the water that the city produces, if clean water, our organization system works well, the vapors that come up to the soil are something that they have no control over, nor do we as a city. nor do we as a city. And so they want to monitor that. They need to go into your home and see if you have a problem or don't have a problem. They want to test your breath to see if you're actually exking a sample of PCE. So they want to do some testing. This is along with both what the EPA is doing directly and what Dr. Lou is doing as part of a grant study that's related to children. So that's October twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, ninth, twenty-ninth. If you live in that district, I highly recommend you take advantage of the administrator because they can answer your questions.
And talking about Dr. Lou, in last month's water bill, utility bill, there was a flyer talking about the study that they want to do with the children as far as testing their breath and levels of PC and everything. So you know, if you are willing to do that, it's a great way to help the city, Dr. Lou, with her study to figure out where we are with these PCs and these contaminants. I don't think anybody here had anything to do with it, but we need to make sure we get it cleaned up and taken care of. Any other questions?
Has anything been decided about the trash pickup?
The council. The council at the last meeting did not vote on the ordinance. It was denied. Then the council passed our budget. Our budget was presented as backwards, assuming that the trash ordinance would go through. Okay? The council had voted to make our sanitation a standalone utility. So in next year's budget, there's no funds for sanitation because our water, our wastewater, the stormwater, those, and now the sanitation are standalone utilities. So we're going to be at a deficit each month until we adjust that. And so they'll be up at the council on how they want to go forward with that. Well, it may be February or March because the, and Mr. Deckard, if I'm wrong, but the seven fifty has been paid. All of it has been going into a sanitation utility fund. Okay? There's about, at the end of the year, there'll be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund. So when we start January one, the gentlemen are being paid from the sanitation department. The fees that we're paying waste management, haul the trash away, will come out of that. We'll keep putting seven fifty into that, but there's going to be a deficit each month. And our responsibility is to report back to the council how much they're losing each month. So at some point, they'll be up at the council what they want to do. If they want to raise the fee to fifteen, if they want to privatize, or if they want to burn about five hundred thousand dollars of cash at the end of the year. Those are the options they're going to look at. And I understand. You know, we came into office, we have the pandemic, then we have sixty-nine shutting everything down. We've got downtown water project. And these are all going to be great things for Mark's. Right now, it's difficult to see that because they're all so frustrated. You know, and just go around and watch people die. You can see how frustrated they are. And I don't blame them. I'm right there with you. But at the end of the day, when it's all done, Mark's going to benefit hugely. The amount of money going down Morton Avenue and up along sixty-nine and down is put in for our wastewater. We as citizens, Mark's, will never be able to pay that. That's millions of dollars that we've gotten and we don't see that. Gary's just finished the project at the wastewater plant because the state passed a mandate that we had to take phosphorus out of our wastewater. We put phosphate over here at the wells, goes through and it comes over to the wastewater. We got to take the phosphorus back out before we discharge it out to the river. The phosphorus levels were extremely high. Once they got the new lines in over along sixty-nine, the phosphorus level dropped drastically. We were lucky in what, Gary, a hundred thousand dollars in chemicals made there more than we were going to have the budget for. But once they got the new lines in and they secured those lines so infiltration couldn't get in, then the phosphorus levels went down. So now we're on a manageable level at here again. We could have done that as a city and we're just fortunate that the state did that. No, no. That was all money that was part of the I-69 project. So, and even though, you know, we implemented the environmental recovery fee, that's a fancy way of saying trash. So on our bills, we were losing so much money through the transfer station because of what we were paying to have the trash haul off. And if we get to fifteen dollars or we go to twenty, here again, it depends on what the council wants to do. If you go to any other community and say, you know, tell them I'm going to use the high-end offer, twenty dollars a month, I can put as many bags out here as I want. And every week they'll come by and pick up my bulk items. And they'll come by and pick up my brush. Nobody else is going to believe that for twenty dollars a month. And I'm telling you, there are some residents that may have every week twenty to twenty-five bags sitting down at their house. And how they come up and, you know, the other alternative is okay, let's put a bag living on. I really don't want to do that because then, I mean, you know, we've had a lot of construction around the city, but if you drive around our city, it is really pretty plain. You know, if we start putting the bag living on or we privatize our trash, some people may just take it and dump it over somewhere else. They may go back to the dumpsters and then move it by your place. So I really don't think the twenty dollars is out of line. It's a huge adjustment for us as residents. But you look at what you're getting for that and what the alternative might be. But you know, and I've gone kind of off of what the dish asked, but that'll be something the council will have to look at.
Is it true that also it includes fire department? I heard something about that, that they get paid out of the trash?
No, no. The fire and employees have their own matrix. It's their own budget item out of the general fund. There's line, gentleman that get paid out of the sanitation. It's the gentleman at the transfer station. We have two packers, so both drivers, and we have to have somebody on the back of the packer. So we've got those five gentlemen. We've been very, very fortunate. Morton County Jail, Lena Fritsch, she brings in the jail correction gentleman to help us out. And, but they tell us they want at least one city employee on the back of the truck with that gentleman. And what makes it hard is we can't always depend that we're going to get four guys or three because it kind of ups and flows on the manpower that they have to be able to give to us. Because we're not the only ones that benefit from that program. But the fire and the place would be done from the sanitation. So, Steve?
Really well, really well. I'm doing really well. Great speedo. I fractured my pelvic bone in August Dacey. But I'm doing very well. To follow up on the trash situation, I have a relative out west and their municipality issues stickers. And you pay her sticker. And I would like to see that done because then the eighty-two-year-old who has one bag of trash a week will not have to pay the same amount as the household that's putting out multiple bags. I don't want to limit the bags either, but I want to pay as you go, which I think would be more fair and you wouldn't have less resistance from the public.
I tell, Steve, if you'll call Mac tomorrow, and I don't know what municipality that is, we'll contact them and see how their program works. Because I know county. Oh, Matt, Matt will be gone. But I know Councilman Deckard Senior had said that Bloomington had done something similar to that years ago, but they've gotten away from it. So we need to research and see, okay, why did you go away from it in Bloomington? And what are you doing in your community that could help us with ours? Because that could be a possible, I think. I mean, Debbie and I would put out one small, about a half a bag a week. Because we recycle. You'd be shocked how many people do not recycle. And it really kind of irritates me, you know, after Christmas, the amount of boxes that you see out to be picked up or if they just break them down and take them to recycling. That would eliminate a lot of waste.
Well, maybe we could call upon scouts to have a project after a big holiday such as Christmas to go around the neighborhoods and sing carols and get hot chocolate and collect cardboard.
Yeah, but I think if you ask Jayman, the scouts aren't as active as they used to be because they weren't there for the festival this year, am I correct, Jayman?
Correct.
Okay, well, we'll go and Saint Vincent to Paul at my church, St. Lawrence.
Any other questions?
We could collect yard towels. I just hate lazy. And I think after you have your yard towel, you should.
Or if you nail on a post, go take it off the post. What I would ask you to do.
Take it down myself?
I would ask you to talk to the councilman that's in your area and look at any possible sign ordinance. Because I don't. Because, Mr. Coffee, we don't have any ordinance with the signs anywhere, do we?
Well, we've got a sign ordinance, but you have to be careful when you get into the sign ordinance because there are, there's been some legislation come down from the federal government as well as state government. If you get into that sign ordinance, you can't discriminate against certain signs. So you have to be uniform and you always get into the first amendment rights, freedom of speech, freedom of expression, those sorts of things. So sign licenses are very difficult sometimes to craft. So we always want to be careful. We do have sign ordinance under our plans over.
That's why Mr. Coffee's here to keep me legal. Any other questions?
One for Ryan Carter. I came here to roast you. County council meetings very often, but there's been a problem about the recycling deals out at County Jail. And I think it's a wonderful spot. People feel comfortable, they can probably ride in, you figure you're under cameras and stuff. And I just wonder where they're going to keep trying to move it. You know, setting bare grounds and this and that. And I don't think it's really in a good location.
And it's going to stay there, right?
Well, if the mayor says so. Yes, to answer your question, there was some concern from the sheriff's department about, about, well, about trustees not being so trusty and exit and whatnot. But after researching other locations and not having much luck, we're going to do a little bit of an expansion in that area. A little bit better fence. And because I'm tired of going and taking my recyclings down and I don't care when it is, it's always cool when I get there. I've asked for maybe another dumpster or two. So we're looking into making the path that those sit on to where maybe we can put at least another dumpster, if not two.
I just want, while we add you, that'll be a good time.
And the mayor, the mayor sits in on that board, so.
I mean, it just seems very comfortable. I see lots of people I do recycle, I see lots of people there. All ages come and go there. I think it's a good location.
And we looked up around the transfer station, but the problem there is safety. And it's kind of a dark area, you know, at least there at the sheriff's department, like you said, he feels safe pulling in there.
The mayor was influential in trying to keep, no, keep it there. And they were kind enough to come to the county to offer land next to the transfer station. But through, and they were willing to do that, but through further discussion, we were concerned about safety, to boil down to that. So that's why right now they are projected to stay exactly where they're at.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to pour you a little bit. Mr. Dunn, since his wife has gone to Florida, he had time last night. He was kind enough to put down some things that we've got going on, just in case you're not aware. And maybe this is part of a question or two. We talked about the weather. You know, again, for decades, as Phil said, it's been talked about and parents are really about it until Gary and Troy started working on it, looking back through the files. And again, that's going to be over twenty-three million dollar project. Relining the sewers. We've gotten some money because of COVID. And we are applying for some state grants also. So we're hoping to take about one point six million dollars with grant money included to reline the sewers. And I know people sitting there shaking or anything, you should be able to do something better with that money than put it in the ground. But we came in office, January twenty, it was May of twenty, there was a sewer break behind Danny Walsh's office. They're in that alley that runs between Morton and Pike. The ceiling was eighteen feet deep. It was old clay tile.
Eight inch, maybe six inch.
And we had to, we didn't feel safe enough for our guys to get down there because we didn't have a box to make a safe for them. So we subcontracted that to a company that put it in the lift station there at Mitchell Street to come in and it cost us twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand dollars to have that sewer fixed. We were fortunate that our guys had narrowed down where the problems at. And so they just dug an area maybe ten feet long to get to. But those are what are sewer lines of line. And so our guys can take care of the shallow ones that may be four, five, six feet deep. But these deep ones, we need to go in and line. And you know, we've had some camera work done for the grant process. And they'll come in, they'll reline it. It's amazing what they'll do and it'll be like a brand, it'll be better than what they were when they first laid in there. So again, that's a lot of money to put in the ground. Let's face it, our toilet backs up and it's not working, you're going to be mad at somebody. So I'd rather take the money and be ahead of the game on that one. We talked about paving and resurfacing. We've done almost nineteen miles. That's roughly twenty-four percent of our city streets. We spent two point three million dollars on that project this year. Sidewalks, you know, there's always this list. You call the mayor's office and you get on the sidewalk list. Well, we didn't want to play that game. So last year, we were hoping that we could put sidewalks in ourselves. And we went up on North Marion Street, you know, charity. And what we found was our guys could do the work. But we're not always guaranteed we could have six guys working on that crew. So they're likely to tear something out today thinking they're going to be here. One of them gets sick or somebody else gets sick, we have to pull somebody else some other place. We're going to have four people working and it wasn't feasible for us to do that. So we had money this year in the budget for sidewalks, but we didn't do anything. We kind of focused mainly on the streets. So we're going to look and see if we can get any grant money. But if not, through the different funds that I was telling you about, we'll have close to a million dollars to put in sidewalks. And that calculates out to be about six miles of sidewalks. Now, take a guess, on average, what it costs to tear out and pour a sidewalk for a block on one side, one side of the street? Oh, somebody just began that part. Bingo, bingo. Ten, ten thousand dollars. So, yeah, you want to find, whatever you have in the investment. But she says ten thousand dollars now.
For three hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah. So what we're hoping to do is, uh, Gary and Mac are going to try around here next few months and identify some sidewalks that need to be done. We're going to look around the schools, main factory, and we'd like to get long runs because we figured that's what we're going to get our best bang for our buck. We're going to price it two ways. One, if X, Y, Z company comes in and does an old nine yards. Or what's the price if our guys come in and tear it out? The other company comes in, forms that portion. We're really hoping that we could, you know, maybe half. And if we could, that gives us about twelve miles of sidewalks. So that's, that's something we're going to know. We've got a executive session with our council next week to talk about our space needs and where we're going to go for the future. You know, Ben there, something back here is the first deputy clerk for the city, and their building is terrible. It, it, uh, I don't want to go online and say it's shitty and dim, but it is in bad shape. Our police department, Alton Thompson, you guys asked me this. You would be appalled by the space that they have to work in. It's less than eighteen hundred square feet. They have people, citizens coming in for a complaint or an interview. And Mr. Dunn is hearing conversations in the hallway that they need to have a private interrogation room to take them into and talk to. So we need to do police department. We need to look about refurbishing City Hall. City Hall is a beautiful building, but it needs some love. If you come up to council chambers, you can see where the walls are cracking and so forth. So we've got to do some things. Our, our electrical system is terrible in there. So it's, Gary takes some money to do this. So that's why we're going to start talking to the council and find out where and which way do you want to go. So we're going to be having that discussion next Monday night. I don't look for it to be answered in one meeting, but we need to start a conversation. Back in two thousand and fourteen, there was two areas of town that were annexed in. The Hager Drive area and the North Main Street area. We were, the city was supposed to supply utilities from those areas within three years. It's never been that. So we're going to take it upon ourselves to, to do that. The Hager Drive area is about one point five million dollars, and extended up to North Main Street is going to be eight hundred thousand dollars. But here again, those are things that the city is obligated to do. And it's been way past time to get that accomplished. You know, right now, sixty-nine's getting close, I'm going to say close, then six months of being done maybe. But if you went down South Street, go down South Street, see how different those are now. The ferry group started Monday morning, Gary, taking down trees. And they took down forty trees, fifty trees down through there. We've got six homes that we're going to be tearing down. That's going to be a major corridor. I think Bob Strider made a comment, he came down Grand Valley the other day, it was on top of the bridge. You can see it all the way down through there. It's, it's, it's going to be different, and there's, there's a price tag in that. That South Street is a four point nine million dollar project. Now, the city is eight-twenty split with the state. Now, the bad side, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, the bad side of it is this amount of money, guess, to do that project was established maybe three years ago. And the state established thirty percent on those dollars. So we all know inflation's taken place the last truly three years, so our price kept going up on that project. So given those eight-twenty split, we're going to pay a little more than our twenty percent. Uh, we're estimating that our amount on that is only one point four million dollars. Then Ohio Street. Ohio Street is supposed to be done before South Street. Gary was going through the files and talking with the engineering company, and they, he saw where they were farther ahead in the process than the company that's doing Ohio Street. So we went to the state, and Gary's a sweet talker, he can get anything out of anybody. But he, he went to the state and, and he convinced them to switch the projects. Let us do South Street first because, well, South Street's a lot more dangerous than Ohio Street. He also talked him into widening that road. So it's going to be the same width as the bridge coming off Grand Valley, and put the sidewalks on both sides instead of just one side. So it's going to be a better venue, and we're going to get that sooner. And Ohio Street will come in next. But the Ohio Street project is five point eight million. Our part on that is going to be at one point four million. We talked about the phosphorus removal, we're just now finishing up for the wastewater plant. That's a million dollars. Now, in twenty-three and twenty-four, Pike Street and Harrison Street are going to get new sidewalks through a special, uh, community grant project. Again, we've got to pay our portion of that, and, uh, it's about a million dollars for each one of those, and our portion's twenty percent. The downtown amphitheater, I could kind of go with Robbie Alps last night. They're on porch talking, I joke, I say, oh, no, I call it the amphitheater, it's not the amphitheater. It's an entertainment area, or at the stage there. And it's going to be on Pike and Jefferson, it's going to be fantastic. This is something that the city has been looking and working on for three or four years. We're finally going to get the funds to get it started. That's going to be roughly three million dollars to do that. We need to push our utilities across or under sixty-nine, uh, between two fifty-two and forty-four. We have some property owners that are willing to annex voluntarily, annex in. So we're going to push those utilities across. And then we can start having those parcels come into the city, we'll give them utilities, and that's where our city is going to grow. Again, that's a million dollars. Yeah, it's like a million dollars here, a million dollars there. Yeah. Uh, but, but, but that's very important for us to get that accomplished. And then the big one that we're really pleased about is the water and sewer project down in the southeast area downward. Tishon, why are Tishon Boulevard, I can't remember if I get that name right. We've got Beck and Bill Spina, and we're campaigning that are building homes in the Indian Village area right now. That's roughly a hundred and fifty homes. D.R. Horton developers had bought property off of the Hannah family. That's going to be roughly two hundred and fifty homes. So to get the water and sewer there to service those homes, we're looking at three million dollars. But the amount of earth that's going to enable us to have is going to be fantastic for our city, for our school system, our merchants around town. And then there's another developer, we're talking to Land Order down there, the ones that come in, and maybe another two hundred dollars. So we have, you know, when we were campaigning back in nineteen, we were talking about that. We wanted to bring the industry parks, we wanted to bring the industry to Marksville. Well, we're in a hole, and we got a lot of flood planning. So to get a large company, and I won't pick on Toba in Marzil, for example, to come to Marksville, probably it's never going to happen. We don't have the soil, or we don't have the right property for that to happen. But we could be a fantastic bed for the community. And we're fifteen minutes from Bloomington, twenty minutes from Indianapolis. And if the building keeps going up the way it is in Wortham and Grovea, and in Hendrick County, you know, there's going to be some opportunity, maybe that we develop some type of transportation system to bus residents up there for a job. They bring less residents to Plainfield. So there, there's all kinds of opportunities. We've got to think outside the box that's going to benefit our city. And, and, and a lot of this, was, this, the financing of this was planned out by Jeff Peters. He's our financial advisor, and working through the RDC. The RDC had funds, a fifteen million dollar bond, and that's how we're able to pay for all of this right now. So it's exciting, it's a lot of money. But it's going to benefit our city in the end. You know, I, I think back when I was younger, what Marksville looked like. We're not, we're not going to go back to that. We're going to be moving forward, and there's going to be a lot of great things that are going to happen to our city. And then we need to be the best bed for the community we can. We were having an entertainment area that was in retail down around the square. Mr. Pennington has done a great job in the city of Marksville. We're so fortunate to have him here in our community, what he's done for us. So all those things taken in, Marksville's a great place, but it's a, we, we got a little valley here, and, uh, you know, we, we got to take care of it and, and watch it grow. So again, I've gone on, does anybody have any questions? Well, you know, it's funny, a lot of people used to say, I'll be dead, don't ever see sixty-nine through here. You know, I know some people that hurry up. Any other questions? Okay, uh, I, again, I appreciate you taking the time to come out here. Hopefully this was beneficial to you, and people watching online, it's beneficial to them. And we get through, into a few more projects, maybe we can do something again in about six months. So again, thank you for coming out tonight and keep us in the progress. Thank you.
The mayor's Q and A session here at RMC. Thank you all for tuning in. He said he'd want to take questions from the audience. Two questions that I would have asked. When's Parker Bell coming in? And we do have two spoken folks ready for the Christmas event. Love you guys. We will see you.